Six, five, four. Hey, good evening and welcome to the May 21st North Hampton City Council Meeting. My name is Julie Shara, I'm the council president and I will be presiding this evening. The meeting and all who participate in it with us on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. It is recording right now. If you wish to participate in public comment, please go to the city's website, northhamptonma.gov, and access the login information from the posted agenda for this meeting, which is also on the calendar. A public comment we're going to start with, as we always do, and we, if you know that you wish to make public comment, if you could please use the raise hand feature to indicate that. So if you go down to the bottom toolbar on Zoom and either hover over it, or maybe it's just static there, and click on participants, that will open up a participant window. And down at the bottom of that, you should have a button to raise your hand. So if you do that, I will be able to see that your hand is raised and I'll be able to call on you. If you are on the phone, you can also raise your hand actually on the phone if you hit star nine. But I see that there are two people that have called in. So if I don't see a raised hand, I will check in with you and ask if you'd like to participate in public comments. So I will unmute each raised hand or those two phone numbers and I'll ask. And you may comment with or without video, it's up to you. When you begin, please state your name and your city or town for the public record. To ensure that everyone has equal opportunity to speak, we ask that you limit your comment to three minutes. After three minutes, I will ask you to please finish your sentence. According to the council rules, we do not respond during public comment as it's your time to speak to us. So while your comments should be directed to us, you'll understand when we don't respond. You may speak on any topic, it doesn't need to be an item that's on the agenda. But as this is an open meeting where anyone can come on, I'll do my best to act quickly if anyone is acting in a way that's clearly inappropriate and outside of what we would expect in council chambers. And I will remove anyone from the meeting that I feel needs to be removed. If you don't wish to make a comment, we ask that you watch on channel 15 or by streaming on North Hampton Open Media. The recording of this meeting will be available on North Hampton Open Media, on their government video archive channel on YouTube. And we thank them as always for being wonderful partners for us and for providing this public access that they always have. I also want to remind people that we're always happy to receive comments by email. They are just as much a part of the public record as you coming on to Zoom and talking to us that way. So please email us at citicouncil@northhamptonma.gov. So we're ready to start public comments. Once public comments concluded, we'll convene the meeting. And anyone from the public who remains on Zoom will no longer be recognized for participation or unmuted during the meeting. And if they have video, their video will be turned off. So I see one raised hand, this is for the phone number that ends in zero eight one. So I'm going to unmute you. And hi, would you like to provide public comment for us?
Yes, this is Hildegaard Friedman. I live at 35 Fruit Street, apartment G68 Cahill, Public Housing. I would like to suggest that the Health Department delineate statistics in regard to cases and deaths of COVID-19, both to the newspaper, the Daily Hampshire Gazette and your website, and specify, specifically describe which wards, we are talking about cases and deaths, which buildings of housing. Am I, am I, am I finished?
No, yours, yours.
Okay, I'll continue. Which buildings I heard a ring ring of housing and a socioeconomic breakdown, including recently unemployed as well as business and professionals. I believe this is more relevant now because of the current testing that is being done. Thank you, this is again Hildegaard Friedman, G68 Cahill.
Thank you so much, Ms. Friedman, for that comment. The other phone number I see ends in six nine six, would you like to make a public comment this evening? Or one three, phone number ending in six nine six. I've, I've taken the rest of your phone number out so it wasn't displayed on the video. Okay, if you would like to comment.
One six nine six.
Yes, that seems right, is that your phone number? Would you like to make a public comment?
Yes ma'am. I would just like to express that Cahill Apartments has a lot of problems here going on now with people thinking that they own the buildings here. They can threaten people here. And there is a lot of drama and drugs going on in here. And when you speak to the police department or North Hampton Housing Authority, they sweep it all under the rug. They don't have any concerns about what we live here in. And I don't, I don't like it. And, you know, I, I don't know what can be done about it, but we really have a serious problem here going on at Cahill Apartments. Thank you very much.
Um, thank you, I appreciate that comment. Could you please, we need to have your name and your city or town, which you've said you live at Cahill, but for the public record, please.
David Call.
Thank you so much.
Thirty-five Cahill.
Thank you very much for those comments. Okay, I'm looking for other hands, if anyone else who would like to comment. I see at least one other. Mr. Hamel, would you like to comment?
Oh, I guess, can you hear me?
I can.
Oh, great, okay, well, thanks for, first time doing a Zoom meeting with the city council. My understanding is that you may be discussing tonight a first vote for a municipal light plant as a potential vehicle for creating a municipal broadband network for the city. I'd just like to express my support for that and hope that the city council will support it as well. This is something that has to be, if it, I'm on the North Hampton High Speed Community Network Coalition, and we are concerned about the timing of this because if it is to be done, it really should be done. It will, will need to be done in two votes, one this fiscal year and one the next fiscal year. So there's not, obviously not too much more time in this fiscal year. And potentially this might be something that to go before the voters in November perhaps. So our coalition is concerned about this and we hope that you will consider it and discuss it tonight. That's pretty much it.
Thank you for those comments. Okay, anybody else who would like to provide public comments? I think everybody else is the rest of us, so. Going once, twice, hold on one moment. Hold on one sec. Amy, would you like to provide public comments? Amy, I mean to put you on the spot.
No, I'm all set, thanks.
Okay, okay, so hearing no other public comment, we will convene. So Laura, will you take the roll, roll please?
Sure, councillor Dwight. Councillor Dwight?
You're muted.
I'm here.
Councillor Foster?
Here.
Councillor Jarrett?
Here.
Councillor Labarge?
Aslan.
Councillor Maori?
Here.
Councillor Nash?
Here.
Councillor Quinlan?
Here.
Councillor Shara?
Here.
And councillor Thorpe?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, we have convened. The first thing on our agenda is, we have two announcements of public hearings and then we have a public hearing. So I'm going to read the announcements first. Announcement of public hearing on the city council budget. We're having our budget hearings on June 3rd and June 4th, 2020. On June 3rd, that will be at 5:00 PM on Zoom. And on the 4th, it'll be at 7:00 PM. So by the order of the city council, in accordance with section 7-4 of the Charter of the City of Northampton, Massachusetts, the city council will hold a public hearing to consider the proposed FY 2021 budget, commencing on Wednesday, June 3rd, 2020 at 5:00 PM by remote participation, and continuing on Thursday, June 4th, 2020 at 7:00 PM by remote participation. Instructions for accessing the meetings will be posted on the agendas. The city council will hear all persons who wish to be heard thereon. The budget is available for inspection by the public on the city of Northampton website at www.northhamptonma.gov. Our second announcement is a public hearing on 20.00, National Grid Verizon, New England, poll petition for Park Hill Road. That's petition number 25763215. These are two separate petitions with the same number. In accordance with the provisions of section 22, chapter 166 of the general laws, a public hearing will be held on Thursday, June 4th, 2020 at 7:15 PM on the petition of National Grid Verizon of England to erect poles and wires upon, along, under, or across one or more public ways. The hearing will be held via remote participation. Please see the agenda for the June 4th, 2020 city council meeting for instructions for accessing the hearing. And now we are moving on to the public hearing that we have tonight, which is public hearing on 20.047, National Grid Verizon, New England, poll petition for Fox Farms Road, petition number 29597581. And according to the provisions of section 22, chapter 166 of the general laws, we're holding this hearing today and I'm going to note that it has been posted to meet the legal requirement. And I heard, I think councillor Dwight?
I move to open the public hearing, please.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded to open the public hearing. First, I'm going to ask for the proponents and I see Lisa is.
We have to vote on opening a hearing.
Sorry, all those in favor, no, roll call, unopening public hearing.
Councillor Dwight?
Yes.
Councillor Foster?
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett?
Yes.
Councillor Labarge?
Yes.
Councillor Maori?
Yeah.
Councillor Nash?
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan?
Yes.
Councillor Shara?
Yes.
And councillor Thorpe?
Yes.
Okay, public, it's now open and I'm going to ask for proponents. And Lisa is here joining us from National Grid.
Yes, Lisa Jocinski with National Grid. We are looking for permission to place a pole on Fox Farms Road approximately 215 feet south of the central line of the intersection of Bridge Road and Fox Farms. There's a first span between the, you know, the first two poles, that's where the wires are very low. There's, it's twofold. There's a house across the street, I think it's actually number eight Fox Farms Road. And their service right now crosses the roof of their house. Would like to bring it, you know, in, would like to get it off of the roof of the house. And we'd also like to correct those low wires. I'm sure the DPW has been out there and taken a look at that, but they're hanging pretty low between those first two spans. The, the house, the house that it kind of sits to the left-hand side, property side of, I did place a call, I don't, I have not heard back from that customer, but it's the second house and on the right-hand side. And it's the far end of their property, near the property line, I mean, in town take, but.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents you'd like to speak to this petition? Okay, hearing and seeing none, are there any opponents? Also here and.
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made or seconded to close the public hearing. Roll call for closing, please.
Councillor Foster?
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett?
Yes.
Councillor Labarge?
Yes.
Councillor Maori?
Yes.
Councillor Nash?
Yes.
Councillor Quinlan?
Yes.
Councillor Shara?
Yes.
Councillor Thorpe?
Yes.
And councillor Dwight?
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing's been closed, we will have our deliberation when we take this up on the agenda. Thank you very much for joining us, Lisa, good to see you.
I'll check in with an email with Laura tomorrow, if that's fine.
That's terrific.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night. Okay, are there any committee chair updates? Councillor Labarge?
Yes, I would just like to bring forth a reminder. The June meeting of City Service Committee will be held during the June 4th, 2020 city council meeting. This will be in an abbreviated meeting to make a recommendation on the appointment of Jonathan Flag as building commission. There will be no meeting on, on June 1st either. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee chair announcements? And if none, moving into one-minute announcements from councillors? Oh, councillor Quinlan?
Thank you very much. I have just a quick shout out to three people and organizations that I admire. Heidi Norton Smith and the Northampton Survival Center, serving our population in need. Alisa Klein and Grow Food Northampton as well, our former city councillor. And specifically, their cooperation on the community food distribution project during the time of COVID-19. The third person is of course, our former mayor Claire Higgins and Community Action for connecting the dots between the two, making this a reality. So I just wanted to tell those three people, I admire them and I'm grateful for their work. But for the public, Grow Food is seeking volunteers, Tuesdays and Thursdays specifically, to help pack food packages and deliver to people in need. It's not a huge time commitment, Tuesdays from 9:30-ish until about 12:30, and Thursdays from 9:30 until just about 11:00. So if you have time and compassion to do something for your neighbors in need, that would be a great use of your energy. I look forward to seeing you there, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Councillor Maori?
Yes, I just wanted to invite everyone to join me Saturday morning between eight and nine for the annual Leeds Little Day Pickup, sponsored by the Leeds Civic Association. We'll be meeting at the Leeds Post Office and we'll be handing out bags and practicing social distancing. I would bring a mask because we'll be interacting with just handing out trash bags and then people can kind of choose a road and go to their own section if they would like to. So bring gardening gloves or work gloves, a face covering, and the trash bags will be provided and the trash bags will be picked up by someone in a car. So I hope to see you there and, and get our neighborhood looking spiffy. And another Ward 7 announcement is sadly, the Memorial Day service that we usually have here in Leeds on Sunday will not, will not be happening, it's canceled. We will be putting a wreath down and everyone's welcome to come on their own time if they'd like to put something there or leave, leave a wreath or some sort of message. So thank you and have a great weekend, everyone.
Thank you. Any other announcements from councillors? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to, did I, was that somebody? Nope, we're going to move on to communications from the mayor. So this is the day that Mayor Narkowitz delivers the budget message and hands over the budget to the council and we begin our part in this process. As, you know, I just announced before, our public hearing dates have been set for June 3rd at 5:00 and the next day, June 4th at 7:00 PM. And we really, you know, we welcome the public to join us and share their thoughts on the budget and at that time we'll also hear from department heads of the five largest city departments about their departmental budgets. The hearing will be continued to the next evening at the council meeting where the public is again invited to come and share their thoughts before we close the public hearing and prepare for our deliberation and first vote on the budget. We'll take our second vote on the city's budget on June 18th and the last day of the fiscal year is Tuesday, June 30th. As the item on the agenda tonight is the presentation of the FY 2021 budget message. We're not deliberating on the budget tonight. So we're going to hear the message from the mayor and if there's some general questions that just pertain to the budget message, he may entertain them, but we're not deliberating or asking specific budget questions this evening. So Mayor Narkowitz, take it away when you're ready. You're muted.
I'm muted myself. Thank you so much, council president Shara, and good evening to the members of the city council. The charter specifies that the budget that is submitted by the mayor to the city council 45 days prior to the start of the fiscal year include a message. And our tradition in Northampton has been for the mayor to formally deliver that message at a city council meeting, so I'll continue that tradition, although this will be the first Zoom budget message delivery, with so many firsts we're experiencing. So to the honorable members of the city council, I submit for your consideration and approval my proposed $116,988,993 fiscal year 2021 budget for the city of Northampton in accordance with Article 7, Section 7-3 of our charter. The budget is comprised of a $101,74,681 general fund budget, together with four enterprise fund budgets for water, $6,945,000, sewer, $6,177,500, solid waste, $795,326, and stormwater and flood control, $1,996,486. This budget proposal represents a 0.03% decrease from the current fiscal year 2020 city of Northampton budget expiring on June 30th, 2020. This is not the budget I had envisioned drafting on the evening of Tuesday, March 3rd, 2020, after Northampton voters overwhelmingly approved a $2.5 million proposition two and a half general override, renewing our multi-year fiscal stability plan. Just one week later, on Tuesday, March 10th, 2020, Governor Charlie Baker declared a state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Our schools and non-essential government buildings were soon closed. The closure of non-essential businesses would soon follow and our city and state economy would put into what some have described as a quote medically induced COVID, unquote, in an effort to stem the spread of deadly coronavirus. With the exception of those businesses and industries deemed essential by the governor, most of the small locally owned retailers in our downtown districts have been closed for weeks. Many Northampton residents have been furloughed or laid off from jobs and unemployment nationwide has reached levels not seen since the Great Depression. The pandemic has plunged our economy into a recession that may take years to recover from. Municipal government has not been spared from the economic impacts of COVID-19. The city of Northampton's major sources of local revenue like parking, building permits, taxes on hotel motel meals, and adult-use cannabis have dropped significantly. We are projecting a shortfall of up to 1.85 million in the fourth quarter of fiscal year 2020 and potentially over $2 million in the first quarter of fiscal year 2021 alone. The city is also experiencing significant unbudgeted expenses as our public health, public safety, and other city departments respond and adapt to the COVID-19 pandemic both now and for the foreseeable future. The severe economic stress facing Northampton residents and businesses led me to delay implementation of the voter authorized Proposition 2 and 1/2 property tax increase scheduled to go into effect in six weeks and forego utilizing any of the $2.5 million in additional tax levy capacity until fiscal year 2022, beginning July 1st, 2021. While I feel strongly that we cannot in good conscience implement the tax increase during a combined public health and economic crisis, this decision will put additional stress on an already dire revenue picture. As I submit this message, we have no updated information on the still pending fiscal year 2021 Massachusetts state budget, which in fiscal year 2020 provided 16.63% of the revenue used to fund the city's budget. In a normal year, both the governor and House would have completed their respective versions of the budget by now and the Senate would have begun working on its version. With no clear timetable for if and when a state budget will be enacted, we are building our city budget with very conservative state aid estimates, knowing that we may need to revisit them later in the fiscal year. It is in this context of extreme economic disruption and financial uncertainty that I am proposing a city budget representing an overall decrease from the current fiscal year and only a slight increase to the general fund of less than one-half of 1%. Given the high likelihood that additional budget cuts may be needed in fiscal year 2021 and future budget years, it is only fiscally prudent and responsible to trim our sails now rather than deferring what would only be deeper and more severe cuts moving forward. This has required difficult fiscal and personnel decisions. My proposed budget for fiscal year 2021 eliminates 17.25 full-time equivalent positions across a number of city departments, including building, human resources, information technology services, public works, parking enforcement, senior services, and treasurer collector. I must lead by example as mayor, so my own office will shoulder some of these difficult reductions through the elimination of one staff position. Some of these staff reductions have already occurred through layoffs in the current fiscal year to address our fiscal year 2020 revenue shortfalls. Other reductions involve the elimination of positions left vacant by promotions, transfers, or retirement, and together with any needed reallocation of duties will net us a projected $613,952 in expenditure reductions to balance our budget. We have shielded the Health Department and our frontline public safety departments of police, fire, rescue, and emergency dispatch from any staffing reductions as they are critical to the city's ongoing response to the COVID-19 public health emergency. We have also worked to hold our public schools harmless from any program or personnel cuts. The education and social and emotional well-being of our city's children have been severely impacted by the COVID-19 shutdown and we know this will require its own recovery process. While not providing the same level of appropriation increases we had projected in conjunction with passage of an override, both of our public school districts will receive substantial appropriation increases to support their critical educational missions. The two largest expenditure increases in this proposed fiscal year 2021 budget will go to the Northampton Public Schools, $1,118,095, and Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School, $646,747. The next two largest expenditure increases are among the city's many fixed costs that by definition cannot be deferred or significantly reduced despite our financial circumstances. Employee health insurance and the city's required contribution to the Northampton retirement system will rise $443,632, or 3.98%, and $258,205, 4.1%, respectively, in fiscal year 2021. While we are delaying implementation of the March 2020 override and suspending renewal of the multi-year fiscal stability plan until fiscal year 2022, we will utilize $935,020 from the Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund to balance this budget. This will leave a balance of just over $2 million in that fund, which was created with the 2013 override. Combined with our three other stabilization funds, we will enter the new fiscal year with over $13 million in total reserves. with over $13 million in total reserves to help us weather the economic and budgetary uncertainty that surely lies ahead. During the many override town halls I held around the city in the months prior to the COVID-19 emergency, I spent considerable time explaining and sometimes defending my determined commitment to rebuilding North Hampton's reserve funds that had been severely depleted following the 2008-2009 Great Recession. I am thankful to the City Council for supporting a steady and disciplined approach to replenishing reserves over the last eight years. Our city's strong reserve position will play a critical role in our ability to successfully navigate the uncharted economic and budgetary waters ahead. This proposed fiscal year 2021 budget is the ninth budget I have submitted to City Council since being elected mayor of North Hampton. It has easily been the most challenging to compose, both logistically during a state of emergency with city offices closed and all work done remotely, and because of the difficult fiscal decisions that could not be responsibly avoided or delayed, given the very real potential for sustained revenue loss and additional cuts moving forward. I am extremely proud of our city's response to the COVID-19 emergency. City employees have rapidly adapted to maintaining core governmental functions remotely while delivering services and vital information. School administrators, teachers, and support staff have worked to continue educating, feeding, and supporting the well-being of our schoolchildren. Public safety departments have worked to keep our community safe and been on the front lines of responding to COVID-19 medical emergencies. Our public health team has led a city and regional response to the pandemic, working to track and contain the virus and issuing critical health guidance and orders to prevent its spread and protect our most vulnerable. Despite the significant fiscal challenges we face in the days and months ahead, your municipal government has and will continue to focus on serving and protecting its residents during this unprecedented public health crisis. I want to thank our Finance Director, Susan Wright, for her incredible work on this budget under challenging circumstances. Between the override and our current crisis, she has had to develop not one but multiple budgets over the last several months and has done so with her usual calm and clear-headed wisdom. Thank you to our city department heads and school superintendents for working with us to make difficult choices to develop this fiscally constrained budget. Thank you as well to the other members of my staff, Alan Wolf, Annie Lesko, and Court Klein, for their assistance compiling and finalizing this document with professionalism and remote teamwork. I look forward to working with the City Council over the next several weeks to answer any questions about this budget or provide additional information it may need. Respectfully submitted, David J. Narkowitz, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mayor Narkowitz. I know that as sobering as it is for us to hear that message, it was so much harder for you and your team to write it and extreme thanks to you and Susan and everyone. I'm really, I'm just awed that you've been able to pull it together and pull this budget together on time despite not having the information from the state while working remotely and under these conditions. So thank you so much for that and for delivering that message. Are there any general questions or comments for the mayor on this budget message? Again, not deliberating on the budget. Counselor La Barge.
Yes, I just want to thank the mayor and also Susan Wright. This has been very, very difficult for everybody, all the businesses in North Hampton, families living in this city, people who have lost their jobs, and you've done an excellent job with this budget book. And I want to thank you again, Mayor. Thank you, Susan, and Court, and Alan, and all the department heads working tirelessly to have to do what we have to do in order to go ahead and move on in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Maori, is that a, is that a hand?
Yes, fatigue, fatigue rate. Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm really impressed at how fast you turned this around in terms of having to switch gears. And I'm grateful to be in North Hampton and have your leadership. I've been telling people, you know, this is the rainy day. We've been talking about the rainy day fund. Despite the beautiful weather, rainy day is here. I was just curious, has this, and your knowledge, have we ever, has North Hampton ever had to have a budget where there was no annual increase in spending? Did it ever happen before? Was my question.
You're muted, sir.
Sorry about that. Well, certainly, my, my first budget and my second budget definitely was a cut because that was again right prior to the, right prior to the 2013 override. So the original budget submissions, I believe in 2014, was clearly a reduced budget. Obviously, it was then overturned by an override after the fact. And certainly, I was a counselor during the period of the aforementioned Great Recession when during the middle of the fiscal year, our state aid was cut dramatically, like to the tune of $2 million in the middle of the fiscal year. And Mayor Higgins had to make some significant, bring forward some significant cuts. We were facing, I think, believe it was about a $6 million deficit at that point. And so we had to make some significant cuts. So again, these, these economic crises tend to be cyclical. And, and so, yeah, this is not unprecedented, but definitely it tends to be tied to periods of economic downturn where there's a sudden loss of revenue or some other severe event that's happening.
Any other counselors? Okay, seeing none. Thank you again, Mayor Narkowitz, for presenting the budget to us this evening. Moving on, the next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. On the consent agenda are the minutes of May 7th, 2020, and to approve the poll petition that we had the hearing on, that is, hold on, 20.047 National Grid Verizon New England Poll Petition for Fox Farms Road, petition number 29597581. Are there any removals from the consent agenda for discussion? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion?
There's a motion on the floor.
Counselor La Barge made a motion. Where was the second?
Counselor Quinlan.
Counselor Quinlan, thank you. Okay, motions were made and seconded, there's no discussion on the consent agenda. So a roll call, please, Laura, when you're ready.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor La Barge.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
And Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Okay, we have approved the consent agenda. We are now going to recess for the Finance Committee. And Laura, when you are ready, could you take the role of Finance, please?
Sure. Counselor Shara.
Here.
Counselor La Barge.
Here.
Counselor Maori. Am I missing? Counselor Thorpe.
Here.
Okay, first item is approval of minutes from May 7th, 2020.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I just missed Counselor Quinlan and substituted Counselor Maori.
Yeah. I thought maybe I got muted or something, so I can say anything.
I apologize.
Tried to sneak in under the radar again.
I'm doing two things at once, but, so Counselor Quinlan is also present.
I'm here, yeah.
All right.
Apologies. Okay, so the motion's been made, this is approval of the minutes from May 7th. The motion's been made by Counselor La Barge and seconded by, not Counselor Maori. Counselor Quinlan?
Counselor Thorpe already did, I think.
Counselor Thorpe, okay, thank you. Is there any discussion on the May 7th minutes? Hearing none. Laura, when you're ready, a roll call, please.
Counselor La Barge.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, the only item on the rest of our agenda is Financial Order 20.052, "In Order Authorizing Acquisition of Easements for Drainage Improvements on Rocky Hill Road, Route 66." So we, once this leaves Finance and goes back to the City Council, there's been a request for two meetings because there's a FEMA deadline on this, for this funding. And I'm going to read the order. So in City Council, May 21st, 2020, "Upon the recommendation of Mayor David J. Narkowitz and Office of Planning and Sustainability, in order authorizing acquisition of easements for drainage improvements on Rocky Hill Road, Route 66, whereas Rocky Hill Road, Route 66, east of the intersection of Ice Pond Drive, needs significant drainage improvements, and whereas the locust significantly threatens the highway to qualify for FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant, whereas the city has been shortlisted for the FEMA grant to fund such drainage improvements, and whereas in order to be eligible for such grants and in order to perform such drainage improvements, the city must acquire an easement over certain property on the north side of Rocky Hill Road, shown as Lot 29, non-building lot for culvert maintenance. On a plan of land entitled Definitive Subdivision Plan Prepared for the Community Builders, Inc., dated December 16th, 2002, revised May 19th, 2003, and May 21st, 2003, and recorded in the Hampshire Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 196, page 70. And whereas Lot 29 is owned in fractional shares by 20 of the lot owners in the Ice Pond subdivision and by the original developer, TCB Hospital Hill LLC, and whereas by securing the FEMA grant and performing drainage improvements, the city is undertaking improvements that will significantly limit the land, the landowner's liability for potential damage to the highway. Now, therefore be it ordered, the City Council hereby authorizes the acquisition by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise, of easements over that parcel of land, shown as Lot 29, non-building lot for culvert maintenance, on a plan of land entitled Definitive Subdivision Plan Prepared for the Community Builders, Inc., dated December 16th, 2002, revised May 19th, 2003, and May 21st, 2003, and recorded in the Hampshire Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 196, page 70, for the purpose of drainage improvements on Rocky Hill Road, Route 66. No appropriation is needed for this acquisition. Nothing herein shall be deemed to otherwise relieve the fee holders of Lot 29 or other responsible parties from their obligation to maintain and repair drainage structures thereon so as to protect the integrity of the highway." Okay, so that is the order. Is, motion's been made by Counselor Quinlan and seconded, I think by Counselor Thorpe. And is there discussion? Hi, Wayne, good to see you. Would you like to speak to this?
Sure, briefly, and obviously questions. So when the Ice Pond subdivision was developed, they took, there is a very clever solution. Rather than building a detention pond, which happens for most projects, they took advantage of very old ice ponds. And so whenever it rains, the water goes from the ice pond and goes to an outlet structure underneath Route 66. We've been seeing an increase, this is partially about climate change, we've been seeing an increased frequency in storms, and some of those storms, whether it's climate change or not, are threatening Route 66. So the design of the pond creates a lot of maintenance challenges for the homeowners association. And so this solution would reduce, they would still be in charge of maintenance, but it would reduce their costs somewhat. And more significantly, from the city's standpoint, it would reduce a major threat to Route 66. In your package, I showed you a picture, I included a picture of the last time we had a major hurricane that did a lot of damage to 66. That didn't totally wipe out the road, but it undermined the road and certainly threatened us. You can imagine a slightly bigger storm wiping it out. So we have a program called North Hampton Designs with Nature. We had a $400,000 state grant two years ago, and we were basically looking all over the city to say, what are the opportunities to build natural systems, take advantage of natural systems to reduce our cost of both flooding and undersized drainage pipes? Right, so this time is we need pipes, this time is we need levees, and those are irreplaceable. But there's some times where we could take advantage of things like an ice pond and for less money catch the water before it ever enters the pipe. So we had this $400,000 grant, it paid for the design, the solution for ice pond and permitting for ice pond. We worked with the homeowners association and they were very excited about it. And then as part of this process, we applied for this FEMA grant. We initially thought we would have lost the time that we would get the FEMA grant and then we'd come back to City Council for the right of way. FEMA wrote us just about a month ago and said, you're shortlisted, no guarantee, but you know, this is a good sign, but you need to give us a easement by June 2nd, otherwise we're going to pass on you and go to the next group. So that's why we're asking for two readings tonight, and I apologize that we didn't anticipate that ahead of time. And then it was further delayed, part of the reason you didn't get this two weeks ago was if you look at the order, how complicated it is, there were some things that didn't quite make sense when the developer was transferring land to the homeowners. They remembered to transfer 2029's, 2029's interest in the pond, but they forgot about it for some of the deeds, they kept some. So there's a lot of players. And so TCB Hospital Hill, for example, doesn't even exist anymore. It's a wholly owned subsidiary of TCB, which still exists, so it's not a problem. But the reason we want to do is a taking instead of a friendly deed is just it's too complicated, we couldn't clean title. We've reached everyone, TCB has no objections, homeowners association is very excited about it, none of the homeowners, we didn't talk to all 20 homeowners, but none of the homeowners, the association reached out to them and none of them objected to this.
Okay, thank you. I can just say that Ice Pond's in Ward 4, and so I was the Ward 4 counselor for six years, and I actually had multiple meetings with them about this issue, and this has been a concern that they've had for years, and they've been trying to find a solution. So I can imagine that they are very, very pleased about this. Okay, I saw, I saw hands.
You did, Counselor, and I put mine down because Mr. Fiden answered my question regarding the fractional shareholders and making sure they were notified, so.
Okay, I see Counselor Quinlan and then Counselor Jarrett.
I just, just wanted to make sure that I completely understand, this is a grant, we're getting the grant and the grant's paying for everything, there's nothing in or out of the city budget with that other than passing the money through to create this project?
No, there is a local match. We're not committed to it, so that becomes, that goes to the normal capital improvement process. So the estimated cost of the project is $350,000, the grant is $262,000. So there's a match of $87,000 and at least $17,000 of that is staff time just to oversee it, so we get credit for that. And we believe it's our understanding that we should be able to get credit for the money we already spent from a state grant for designing. So we still don't know the exact, there will be an out-of-pocket cost that will come before you and you're not committed to that at the time.
Right, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Jarrett.
So I noticed that the City Council order, the legal description, the title holders and lien holders are blank in our packet. And so I talked with Laura about this, who talked with attorney Seawald, who said he understood my concerns, but basically that they are still working on it and that the lawyer, the title attorney, will be done with it by Tuesday. So that, it's a little concerning to sign something where there's no listing of who you're taking from, but I think I can trust that, that people will do this well. So, but I just wanted to point that out.
And Counselor, if I could add one thing, if that's okay? The legal description, that's sort of because in the interest of sort of belts and suspenders, we write down a legal description, but in your package, you have a survey of this land. So basically, all the legal description will be taking the survey and converting it to, you know, writing down the meets and bounds, you know, some of the feet along this line, but you see the survey in your package of exactly what it is. We did send our attorneys, the owners, all the property owners, based on the assessor's records, that's easy, so we could send that to you. The problem is he needs to chase their title because the assessors don't need the same level of legal scrutiny that we need for to actually go into the documents. The problem is he needs to chase their title because the assessors don't need the same level of legal scrutiny that we need for to actually go into the documents.
Yeah, thank you for that explanation.
Any other, oh, Counselor Nash. You're muted.
Yeah, so.
Just means we can't hear you.
So follow up on Counselor Jarrett's question. So will the parties be identified by the time we're signing this document? Or is that still? In fact, I had that whole question of how we're going to sign this thing, but I was going to save that for when we're in full counsel. But so are the names going to be on there in terms of who we're taking from when we're actually signing the document?
So I guess. So the short answer is, we hope you're willing to sign without them, but we could do that if we need to. So Laura Cruster has kindly agreed to go around and get all your signatures. We don't need to get to a majority of councils, so she doesn't have to go too far. We're going to have those names by Tuesday. We have to record within a week. And of course, because of, there's no physical recording, it takes time. So if you insist on waiving the names, we will certainly honor that. But if it's possible, get signatures before then. It just buys us a few days and lets us go faster. Certainly, before we record it, we're happy to scan it and send you all copies so you see the full document that's going in your names.
That would be cool. That would, that would be fair. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments on this order? Okay, seeing none. Roll call on a positive recommendation, please, Laura.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
And Counselor Labarge.
Counselor Labarge had to step away. So that moved toward with the positive recommendation. There's no other business, so is there a motion to adjourn finance?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please, on adjourning when you can.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Labarge. Oh, I'm sorry, absent. And Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Okay, we've adjourned finance and we are moving back into the council meeting. And our first item back is that financial order. So 20.052, in order authorizing acquisitions of easements for drainage improvements on Rocky Hill Road Route 66. Again, this is first reading, but there has been a request for two readings on this.
Move approval? Second.
Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Any further discussion on this order? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Laura.
Okay, Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Counselor Labarge, who I'm assuming has not returned.
Is not. So that passes in first reading?
Move the suspension of rules, please, to allow for a second reading.
Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight, seconded by Counselor Nash to suspend rules. Any discussion on the suspension of rules? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
And Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Move second reading, please.
Second. Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight for second reading and seconded by Counselor Maori, I think. Any discussion on the second reading? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
And Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading. Thank you. And we already, we've talked briefly about the process for getting those signatures. I guess you'll, you'll hear from Laura if she's going to come and try and get your signature on that.
Yes, my intention is to hopefully contact people tomorrow to get signatures.
A question, a question about that. We can't do this electronically as PDFs. They have to be.
The registry doesn't accept the electronic signatures since it's a document, yeah, for recording.
A question about that. Is it possible for us to print it, sign it, and scan it back to you? I just know.
No, I don't believe so. I think we, Wayne and I asked this question of the city solicitor. They need original signatures.
Okay. All right.
And we need five, right, Laura?
Yes.
Okay, we will get this. We can do this. I believe in us. Okay, moving on to financial orders in second reading. We've got 20.049 in order for FY 2020 budget transfers.
Move approval, please.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Any discussion on second reading on the budget transfers? Seeing none. Laura, roll call, please.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
And Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Okay, that passes in second reading. Next, we have ordinances in second reading, 20.037, an ordinance relative to essential services and municipal facilities.
Move approval, please.
Motion's been made by Counselor Dwight.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Thorpe. Is there any discussion on the second reading? Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
And Counselor Shara.
Yes. That passes in second reading. I don't have any other business.
Move to adjourn?
Motion's been made to adjourn. Been seconded. And roll call on adjourning, please, Laura.
That don't like Counselor Nash's voice for the second, was it?
I think so.
Okay.
Came out of my mouth, so.
I can't see everyone's face at the same time.
But I don't know who.
I see.
All speaking at the same time, so.
I see some ears.
Okay, Counselor Dwight.
Yes.
Counselor Foster.
Yes.
Counselor Jarrett.
Yes.
Counselor Maori.
Yes.
Counselor Nash.
Yes.
Counselor Quinlan.
Yes.
Counselor Shara.
Yes.
And Counselor Thorpe.
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned and it is still light out.
Oh.